They can drive home.
Good to go. All right. Natasha's giving me the thumbs up and welcome, everybody, to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. May 1st and it is 6:00 PM. Before we start the meeting, as usual, I'll just remind everybody that there are some rules that I would ask you to follow tonight.
Cell phones is one of them.
Cell phones is one of them. Regarding making public comments, and I only see one public comment tonight from Mr. Coker. He's been here a couple of times, so I won't go through all of these in detail, but just remember that you have three minutes to make your statement. There is a timer at the podium. Please avoid using profanity and... And that's it. So I'll start the meeting by pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first up is amendment and approval of the agenda. And I do have one thing that I would like to change under discussion items. I'd like to add one in position A. And that will be the swearing in of Nick. Shelley is here. She's got the appropriate paperwork necessary and we can move that under A. Then we'll put co-file contract at B and then fair board appointment at C. Any other amendments?
No, sir.
No?
Approval as amended. Jay, unless you've got something?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes passes three to zero. Now we will move into general public comments and I have one from Lynn Coker.
First off, want to thank staff for sending me the summary that was requested regarding investigations of Commissioner Herzog. Tonight I want to offer a tale of two leaders, not two cities, two leaders. Recently, Janelle, who was perceived to be a talented Brookings city manager, stole property from Freddie's. She was caught red-handed and required to return the stolen property or provide reimbursement. During the authorities' investigation of Janelle, it was confirmed she stole less than $16 from Freddie's. Many in the community thought Janelle had a prior history, but making poor choices regarding whether or not to pay for merchandise. Nevertheless, following the investigation, her bosses disciplined Janelle with what was perceived by the voters to be a slap of her wrist. Though her bosses hoped the matter was settled, these same city bosses were confronted by a sustained storm of citizen complaints coupled with widespread growth in employee cynicism and disappointment with their bosses. The community employees banded together, had Janelle fired, and in the process fired several of her Brookings bosses because of their poor leadership, murky ethics, and irresponsible handling of the Howard matter. Now let's turn to leader number two. Herzog's situation is both different from and yet similar to Janelle's. For instance, unlike Janelle, few county voters perceive Herzog as a strong leader. On the other hand, like Janelle, Herzog was caught red-handed stealing county property and in the process commandeering a county vehicle, all for personal gain. Unlike Janelle, who was found guilty in stealing less than $16 in merchandise, Herzog appears to have stolen county property valued at hundreds of dollars. Like Janelle, Herzog was required to reimburse the county for the value of the stolen items or return the property. Just like Janelle, some perceive Herzog has a history of unethical decision-making in both his private and public sector professional engagements. The moral of the two leaders has less to do with Janelle or Herzog as much as it lays the foundation for our current BOC majority to inject the highest possible standards of transparency and voter accountability into this story. Even more, this story is an invitation for our leaders to take the specific steps of bringing to our county a report of the full dimensions of injury done by Herzog. For instance, instruct staff to create and distribute a press release describing what specific county property was stolen by Herzog. What was the market value of the stolen property? What type of vehicles and or equipment was commandeered by Herzog? What was the intent? What was the goal? What was the range of county legal and financial liability associated with Herzog's reckless actions in the event an accident happened or if parties were injured? And finally, what employee relations were complicated because of Herzog's actions? I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Lynn. So I don't see any other public comments, so we will move on in the agenda to service awards. And service award A is the recognition of Tad. We all know Tad. He's been here for 10 years, although he couldn't be here tonight because he has a new, is it grandson? Great-grandson. He has a new great-grandson, so he's not able to be here tonight. But all of us have interacted with Tad. I know he's been extremely helpful in the IT department as of recent, so we appreciate all of his years of service here. And then the next recognition, item B, is recognition of Dave Barnes, our county treasurer. Retired county treasurer, and I understand that Dave had his first day of retirement today and...
Eighteen hours and seven minutes.
And...
Not that I'm counting.
Sure that he got all of his work done, that his wife has been requesting him get done, so...
No, but I got started on it and she's happy about that, so, you know, I just, I'm glad to be here and glad to be done.
So, Dave, we did get you a plaque and we very much appreciate your service.
Wow, thank you.
Came out of your treasurer's budget?
Hey, I'm bringing my office funds budget cut down to nothing, so, thank you. Much appreciated. David, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Oh, I think Brad definitely does.
If he had, he could add a little bit of plaster to it.
That wasn't very nice.
It was truthful.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, brother.
All right. I'd like to say, Dave, I know it's been probably a difficult, like, four years, I suppose, right? Three and a half, how long has it been?
Three years and three months, I believe. Same amount of time. Mr. Herzog has only been in office two weeks longer than me, I think, three weeks.
It's been a little over three, yeah. Yeah. And I'm sure you saw a lot of, you saw a lot from the inside. You were here weekly prior to that, attending every meeting and keeping an eye on things. And, you know, just, I'm sure that the citizens of Curry County are thankful for your service.
I'm, you know, it's been my pleasure to serve them. You know, if I might make a side comment, the tax waiver that has come up. I've been reading a lot of comments on social media, people saying things and, you know, I, as the county treasurer and even before, I looked into this and I've, even before Commissioner Alcorn was on the Budget Committee, I remember going to the meetings back then and Budget Committee admonishing the Board of Commissioners, you need to find new revenue streams. This goes back seven, eight, nine years now, the whole time that I've been living here. And up until this Board of Commissioners, there's never been a majority of commissioners who've had, who stood up and said, this is what we're going to do. You know, it's unfavorable, it's making us look like bad people, but, you know, we have explored everything else, all the things that people are suggesting out there. I've explored them all, you know, ad nauseam, and this is our only choice, you know, this is it. So I just, I really hope that the people can get behind this. This is going to impact government services across the board and will affect everybody in any, anything that have to do with the government, filing deeds, getting plans for building, coming in for basic services. We need this and, you know, it's, I don't like it either, but it's just the way it is. And I just want to send that message out to the people and I hope you get behind it and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
When you say refer to this, we need this, are you referring to... Thank you.
All right, moving on to item five, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So now we'll move on to discussion action items and A is the swearing in of Nick. But before we swear Nick in, we've got some formalities that we have to work through, don't we, Ted?
We do, we've got an order. You have the order before you, so the order, you can use that.
Right. I'm going to have Jay read it since I don't have my glasses with me.
Okay. In the matter of, in the matter of an order appointing Nick Vasino, deputy treasurer, to fill the vacancy of the Curry County Treasurer position, whereas the board received a written resignation from David Barnes, county treasurer, effective April 30th, 2024, and whereas the board desires to ensure that the county treasurer vacancy be filled immediately in order to provide the continuance... Is that right?
Continuance.
Continuance, sorry.
Yeah.
Of services provided by the treasurer's office and whereas Nick Vasino is currently employed as the deputy county treasurer and duly qualified and has demonstrated his willingness to fill the aforementioned vacancy. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered that Nicholas Vasino be appointed county treasurer effective May 1, 2024, and upon taking the oath of office pursuant to Article 5, Section 16 of the Oregon Constitution. The person appointed by this order shall serve until his successor has been elected at the next general election and upon taking the oath of office dated this first day of May 2024.
And if you could each sign that, then we hand that to Shelley. She will record it. You have a tiny table?
Do I have a tiny table?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, we got a vote on it.
I'll move to approve the order appointing Nick Vasino to county treasurer.
I'll second that motion.
So motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
So Nick?
Congratulations, I think, Nick.
Congratulations. Watch your head, Gene, with that television above you. Okay. Yes.
Yes, absolutely. So Shelley's got to record the deed first. That's what she's doing now. She brought all of her stamps and paraphernalia with her.
While she does that, Nick, would you like to say anything?
He actually would not, but...
Well, I just wanted to thank Jay, Brad, John, Ted, everyone, for this appointment. Want to thank Dave. Took me on about eight months ago, showed me a lot, Julie too, and now Kena's showing me a lot too, so I'm learning a lot as this goes forward, but I appreciate you guys' confidence in this and I look forward to serving everyone.
Absolutely.
All right. Now comes the hard part.
Where do you want us?
Right here.
Okay, so raise your right hand if you're ready to speak after me. Hi, Mr. Vasino.
Hi, Nicholas Vasino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And honorably...
Honorably.
...demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of...
In the office of...
Curry County Treasurer.
Curry County Treasurer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
To help me out.
So what we got.
Thank you.
If we're around, 30 years, oye, oye, oye.
Nick's already getting gray hair.
Oh, yeah? Come on, strawberries.
I had dark hair once.
Took about, took about two minutes.
Congratulations, Nick.
Yeah, congratulations, Nick.
Sure.
So that'll conclude Nick's swearing in and we'll move to the co-file proposal and contract. And Shelley, that's you when you're ready, no hurry.
See you, Dave.
Thanks for coming, Dave.
Shelley, I'm going to need to ask you to stop dropping everything.
I'm still working on such a tight...
Yeah, that's a tiny table.
You're good, you're good, Shelley. Go ahead.
So this is just bringing the contract with co-file forward. We've been talking about this for the last quite a few months. Ted has looked over the contract, didn't have any concerns.
It looks like we, what was proposed, so that's what was discussed with the commissioners.
And so then on, if this is approved, we'll bring a resolution transferring the ARP funds into my department.
And can you remind us, Shelley, how far back will this get us?
It depends. I don't know that answer for sure. I'm hoping that at least it will get us back to when we first went to computer in 1992.
Okay. Okay. That's a big start.
Yes.
That's a big start, so...
Yeah, currently, just the work that we've been doing in the office, we're back to 2022.
Okay.
So it's taken us, you know, quite a while to...
Yeah. Eight months. Okay.
Yeah, there was some public questions about why we needed this, why it was important. Maybe you could speak it out for us.
These documents are not open to the public. This isn't a public portal for them. It's simply for our office to be able to provide the public with their documents. I think that was the email, wasn't it, mostly about the portal?
Yeah, that was, that was the gist of the questioning behind it, but...
And there aren't any original documents anymore. These are all just documents that were on microfilm, they have no index, so in order to find the document, we either, if they have a timeframe, we have to go through hundreds, thousands of records, one by one, to try to locate a document.
And that's a responsibility that we have to the people of this county and it's a service to everyone in this county, literally.
Pretty much, I mean, it's a service, but it's also kind of a requirement to be able to have...
Yeah, for title, chain of title.
Yeah.
And, you know, the primary individual right is really the property right. It's not anything else, not the right to safety or anything else. Everything, everything springs from the ownership of real and personal property.
It is the differentiator between being, living in America and a lot of different places.
So any discussion on the proposal or the contract?
No, I'm in favor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the contract with co-file for image and indexing records in the Curry, the Curry County Clerk's office.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley.
So now we'll move on to item C, which is a fair board appointment. And pull that up. So this is Lynn Wald. We've been advertising for this fair board appointment. We have a couple of open seats right now. And anyone who's been following all the changes with the fair board and the fair, you know, filling those seats is, it's important. And we got this application. I spoke with Lynn just a few days ago in a very informal interview. She has a really big background with livestock, with 4H, and with youth and kids that show animals with 4H. She's been active with the fair. She's been following all of the, all of the events with the fair board, all of the discussions. She's, she's very aware of the responsibilities and very, very eager to serve. I think she will add value to, to the board in an area that, that we could, we could definitely use her expertise, so I would, I would recommend that we, we appoint her in that position.
Well, you know most about fair, so I will definitely take your advice and heed.
I agree, I...
You know her, don't you, John?
Past the 75.
Yeah, she said you went to school together.
Went to high school together and, yeah, she's a, just a very upstanding...
Yeah, she's got a big ranch up there, a lot of cows.
Yep, elk and cows and...
Does she used to have 4H? Did she used to run some 4H up at her place?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, I think she still accommodates some of the kids' animals up there, that kind of thing.
My daughter did DeMartins.
Yeah.
She was a Johnson, her maiden name, so, yeah. Dad was a truck driver. No, not Chuck. Her dad, you mean?
No, there was a brother in the class that he sent him.
Oh, I don't know, I can't remember that.
Just remember the females.
Yeah. I'll, I'll move to appoint Lynn Wald to the fair board. Which position will it be?
Position two.
To fair board position two with a term that expires on December 31st, 2025?
Six.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So we'll have Natasha reach out to Lynn and hopefully she can make the next fair board meeting. We had one last night and got, got through quite a bit of preparation work for the upcoming fair, but it'll be great to have Lynn on that board. That'll give us a quorum if we're missing someone also. Okay, so now on to Director of County Operations update. Ted?
I've been working with Kena Wolf, our Finance Director and Head of HR, on streamlining some duties out at the Road Department and some other boards, but primarily Road Department the last couple of days. As we progress, some of the Road Department Office staff will have modified job descriptions so that they can focus on their particular areas of expertise. I attended the fair board meeting last night and was brought up to speed on developments and improvements going on there. The arena roof repair is a current priority and the fair board was asked to address some policy and safety concerns in advance of the fair itself. Animal safety and an alcohol plan and related issues were presented and discussed by Wendy Lang. I'm informed that interviews for a fair manager position will be, are scheduled for next week. I also want to say that, that it's a good meeting and I do hope to see you there as well, Commissioner Tost, because it's, it's, a lot happens there, educational.
I hear. I, I attended my fair share.
Yes, you did. You did.
Play on words, fair share.
As directed at the last meeting, I went with, I met with the joining property owners at Social Security Bar to determine priorities and next steps with regard to the county's lease of the gravel bar. So far, a 10 mile per hour speed limit has been posted on the site. I am meeting with Scott Fine, our County Surveyor, on site there this Friday to determine the specific areas over which the county is responsible, and I'm hoping that Commissioner Tost will be able to, to meet us there as well. He's got a background in that area. Let's see. We're taking steps. I think we've, I just want to report that as far as the development of the, of the workforce housing sites in North County, we are moving through the planning department process to get that done. So we're on schedule and we should be looking for ways to get those completed and, yes.
And that housing...
Across from Pacific High School.
Yeah. I do have, we have that, we had that meeting with Stephanie Hadley...
Right, right.
The, oh, Regional Solutions folks.
Right.
I did get a follow-up from one of the developers who feels like they have a pretty strong kind of grasp of what possibly we could be envisioning.
Okay.
So I'll make sure to pass that.
Oh, great, okay.
The other question I had, when you were talking about the fair building, the, you know, the ag building that we have down there? From recollection of previous meetings when I was attending, it was discussed, I think, something, wasn't the idea there pretty much just a kind of a rinse and repeat, like take the whole thing and redo? And after evaluation, is that what you guys found?
After evaluation, we don't, it doesn't need that. There's the, what, there's, on the west side, there was a, there was a entry door that, that was degraded and there's, and some of the supporting steel around that is pretty, pretty degraded and that needs to be repaired, but it's relatively small as far as the building itself goes. There's some addition, you know, some modifications of the, of the, of the base, the, you know, the...
It's just a dirt floor, right?
We want to, we want to add some gravel or make it, make it a little bit more. It was, it was kind of, it's been, been used a lot, let's put it that way, so we're going to, we're going to take a look at that. And then, and then also outside, you know, during the winter, especially in the summer, it won't be such a big problem, but it does not help the building's longevity. That whole area needs to be better drained so that we can get, there's standing water around there a lot of, a lot of the time, but, but the building itself is not, is, it's in fairly good shape, so...
Well, that's, that's a much more, much improved from the discussions we were initially having.
Yeah. Much improved.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be moving forward with the, with the arena and we, we want to be having that arena available for, for a pre-fair event in June, so that's where, that's what we're shooting for. Yeah, it's all pretty, pretty, pretty helpful. And that's all I've got.
All right, elected official updates. Nick was supposed to give us an update, but he's already run off, so I guess we'll, we'll skip that and we can move forward to commissioner updates.
I have nothing.
Nothing, John? Commissioner Tost?
Just on point with the fair, as you guys go through the process of looking for a fair manager and the interview process, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, the current board, Ted, Rabia, and Natasha have been managing the fair. They've actually had to prepare for a couple of different events and they've been doing a really good job of making sure that fair events did not skip a beat in the midst of lack of personnel, so, and that's, those are additional duties on top of the duties that are already demanding for our county right now, so I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that they've been doing. all the hard work that they've been doing to make sure that that continues and improves. And then just to, you know, I'm gonna tack on to what Treasurer Barnes was talking about and, you know, I've been, I, this levy is, when we look back on different chapters in Curry County's history, this levy will be a, a, a huge chapter in which we get a right, in which the citizens get to decide what this next chapter for Curry County looks like. And, you know, I've said this a few times, but I just want to say it again in public, you know, I've, I've tried to boil it down to its pure essence and this levy is basically, in my mind, it is, it is a sacrifice. This is the choices. Either we sacrifice a few hundred dollars and retain our quality of life and improve it with better law enforcement services, or we save a few hundred bucks and we put that quality of life in jeopardy, and that's what the chapter's going to unfold. And I just, the, the, the reality of that is upon us. Ballots went out today and I genuinely and sincerely hope that when people, when they see that, they, they take this into consideration. Every, this is, it will be, every vote will matter, and so please vote and, and consider these options going forward and what it looks like for the future of Curry County. That's all.
I just want to clarify, I do like to take credit for things, the secret of my success is taking credit for other people's work, but I just want to say that Natasha has really been knocking herself out for the fair, so I want to take my hat off to her.
Likewise.
Anything else?
Are you, will, gonna address the, the issue about the pamphlet?
I am.
Okay, well then, that's it for me.
I am, I am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with, I, I want to put, I want to take something that you said, Jay, and I want to put that in context for the people, that, you know, we have, we have reduced the number of employees here. We have, we have restructured, reorganized, and in those efforts tried to be more efficient with less in anticipation for the budget shortfalls, the budget cliffs that are in front of us. And I'm, and I want to use Natasha and Rabia as an example of what that looks like. Natasha is doing fair duties, she's doing BOC duties, as well as many other things here, but...
HR?
She's recording right now. Rabia today. Rabia went and picked up animals. Rabia was at the fair meeting last night. She prepared the order that we signed earlier. That, that's the type of thing that's, that's happening here and there's been some comments and criticism that we haven't had, made any efforts to do, you know, anything other than just ask the people to pay more money. Well, that's not accurate. We're asking, we're asking our employees to do a lot more. Now, that's Natasha and Rabia. There are others who are doing multiple duties as well, but, but those two are a really good example of, of what it takes to provide the level of service that we're capable of providing right now.
Can I, can I add on that?
Please.
You know, the, the culture of an establishment determines its outcomes and right now, the culture that is, that is developing in, within Curry County, within the Curry County Service Development, Services, is, there is no term, that's not my job. It truly is a team effort and there is, there are people who are without question willing to, to do whatever it takes to, to move this county forward and it's only gonna get stronger because when people assimilate into the culture, they become part of that culture and that, that's what grows going forward. And so, yes, it, it has been a rough year, there have been, it, but it's been a blessed year. We've had an opportunity to make things more efficient, look, look at things in a, in a lens that maybe wasn't, wasn't used in the past to, to maximize those efficiencies and in the outcome becomes this growing culture of we can do it, it's not, you know, that, that's a foundational piece and if, and every organization has to have standards and if that's one of our key standards that we, none of us, none of us say we can't do, that's not my job, but we all look at it as how can we make this job better? That's, that's, that's a great way to start off this upcoming year, going into this opportunity for this, this levy.
Exactly, and we, I, I read a comment on social media that, that we should have anticipated or we should have known that, you know, we had this budget shortfall. Well, we did and we have and we've been preparing for it and these are some of the things to give you an example of how we've been preparing for it. And, and I also want to say that I appreciate Rabia, Natasha, and others who have really stepped up and are covering multiple jobs to make that happen and, and, and continue to do so and it's very much appreciated. Now, moving on to another issue that I have received emails and read social media comments about the levy not being in the voter's pamphlet and some of the emails and some of the comments are that we're hiding something, that there's some nefarious or suspicious reason that we didn't do that, that we're trying to trick the public. Why didn't we anticipate that we needed to put that in the, in the voter's pamphlet? We're not being transparent or there's some effort to, to, to hide something from the people. It looks like we're not prepared. What else are, are we not prepared for? What else did we not think through? So, first of all, I will say that as the Chair of this Board, ultimately, that's my responsibility. I take responsibility for that. That was a mistake, absolutely. And here's the thing, when I took this office, I, I actually, I was on the City Council in Brookings. I resigned early so that I could educate myself and prepare as much as I could in anticipation of taking this position. When I took this position, I immediately asked to go to County College, which I was granted, I went to County College, to try to learn as much as I can. This is a difficult job and I got to tell you that I didn't know that to put the upcoming levy in the voter's pamphlet, you have to have an ordinance in place that allows you to do that. I didn't know that we didn't have an ordinance in place. I didn't know that we needed an ordinance to do it. I anticipated just putting this in the voter's pamphlet and then I also found out that anything that we had put in the voter's pamphlet previous was wrong. We shouldn't have done it. So, I didn't know that, but I take full responsibility for that and I am constantly trying to stay on top of things I need to know as a county commissioner and it's extremely challenging, but that is why that didn't end up in the voter's pamphlet. We needed ordinance to put it in there, we didn't have one, we couldn't get it done in time and it didn't make it. They were not hiding anything, we're not concealing anything, we're not, there's no nefarious plan to trick people, we just simply didn't make the deadline because I didn't know and I take responsibility for that.
We have one now.
We do have one now and, and so any future, any future issues, we, we, well, we won't have this problem again, so we do have one now, but I want the people to know and understand why that, why that is. Now, we do have some mailers that are going out to everyone that will give them additional information about this levy and direct them to the website so that they can review the information on the website and make an informed decision. Obviously, we've held the town halls, we're doing everything that we possibly can to inform the people what their choices are, but as to the issue relating to the voter's pamphlet, I want you to know and I take responsibility for that. That's all I have. Anything else?
Do we want to talk about the, the upcoming town hall countywide?
The virtual. What is the date on that? We moved that to the eighth?
Yeah, May 8th at 6:00 PM. There will be a, there will be some notifications going out that may reach folks' phones to give them a link and a time and date of the virtual town hall. It will be countywide. There will be an opportunity to submit your questions and we will be doing our very best to make sure that all those questions are answered during that town hall, so...
So, hope, hopefully if anyone has any questions, you'll be able to attend that. You can also call the number on the website if you're looking to get your calculation checked so you have accurate information on what it will specifically cost you. We've been getting a few calls, a few more calls throughout the day. Natasha also does that, that's another duty that she has, but please call, please check and feel free to email or call. I'm trying to, we're fielding a lot of those now and I'm trying to make sure that I get back to everyone, but, but please don't hesitate. And if no one has anything else, then we can adjourn this meeting at 6:41.